I'm getting rid of liven, I'm getting rid of liven up your mics, so be careful. It is time to begin our county commission meeting this evening. We certainly thank each of you for being here. Tonight, to open the meeting, our invocation will be led by Commissioner Bert Chalfant and our pledge to the flag by Commissioner Tom Bain. If you would, please stand for the invocation and then the pledge.
Our holy and gracious heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this beautiful day in our beautiful county. Be with us, guide us, direct us. May all we say and do be acceptable in thy sight. We ask in the name of thy son, our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. Bobby, could I get you to straighten those eyes a little and please?
Attorney's work is never done.
So they'll not, so they'll know who they are.
Well, good for that.
That was a freebie. This time, we'll have our roll call. Ms. Anderson?
We have twenty-three present, one absent, Commissioner Ford.
Okay, Commissioner Ford is out of town on business and gave me the indication he would not be here with us tonight, so I want to thank each of you for being here. First item that's on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular March tenth, two thousand and eight county commission meeting. These minutes were mailed out to each commission member. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Second, Commissioner Cook, the motion. Commissioner Hayes, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Introduction and acceptance of the highway commission minutes. These were mailed out to you after they were adopted by the highway commission. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Ms. Mills, Mrs. Mills, the motion. Commissioner Wilson, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Citizens communication. Under this portion of the agenda, we have one person that signed up tonight, Ms. Mary Pierce. If you would come, Mary, and we'll allow you to address the commission at this time, please.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm here to talk about Fleming Hall.
Give us your name and address, please.
Mary Pierce, four ten Watercrest Drive, and I'm representing the Heritage Foundation. At the last meeting, the demolition was deferred, and I was going to do my best to come back to you with more information. The day after the meeting, we received a grant from the National Trust for fifteen hundred dollars in the Heritage Foundation match that we hired Mark Buchanan with EMC Structural Engineers out of Nashville. He has prepared a structural engineering report that I received this morning in the mail, the final copy of it, in that I have emailed to some of you all this afternoon, but the computer, it has a lot of pictures and it's going to take me a while, but I should get those finished up tomorrow. And I have presented a copy to Mayor Rogers Anderson, as well as Russell Little has been sent an email copy. And Ms. Mary Brockman has her email copy here this afternoon, this evening. The report, in the summary, says that he believes that, in his best knowledge of working on similar projects, that the building could be restored for the same amount of money as it would take to tear it down and build a new building. That, of course, I am an advocate for historic preservation, appreciate all you all have done over the years for historic preservation, and hope that's the route you'll decide to go. In addition to that, Fred Reynolds, who is an engineer and a contractor with Rock City Construction stepped forward and he said, he is, will be back in town next Monday, he is willing to replace, to shore up the beam that is broken that's causing the majority of the trouble in the old Fleming Hall building and dry in that roof. And Lilian Stewart is willing to raise what it would take to do that. Fred said he also felt that it would be very helpful to you all to know what a new roofing system would cost, and he pledges to do that for us pro bono. So that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I really thank a lot Mr. Al Ritter and his staff for letting us in the building many, many, many times to look at it, and they've cooperated with us in every way possible, and that's very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we want to, now, Mary, I would assume that you will get, will get copies of that report because the chair had asked you to get that to me, and I've yet to get it, so...
Well, we got it today at ten o'clock in the morning, and we will get that to all of you within the next two days. Are there any questions?
Thank you. No questions allowed. I just want from the chair because that was the direction that I gave you. Under communications and messages, we want to accept the fact that Mr. Lynn Sutton is here tonight as our Sergeant Arms, and Lynn is always faithful to be here. And thank Lynn for being here representing the Sheriff's Department. And I'd like to ask those of you in the audience to help us if you would. If you have a pager or cellphone, please turn it off. If you have a pager that's on silent so that you allow us to conduct our business tonight without any interruptions whatsoever. Also, we've got several communications that we need to take care of tonight as we go through the agenda, and I want to do that before we get into, start into the communications and the messages. I've passed to you a copy of a resolution that was just filed just a few moments ago, Resolution five oh eight twenty-eight. That resolution was just filed and accepted by the clerk. Everybody have a copy of it, five oh eight twenty-eight? Any objection to hearing that late filed resolution this evening? I see none. And then, Dane, if you would pass that out, we, we thought we were going to be smart and list all the exceptions and late files on this sheet that I'm passing around to you, but we almost got it up to date. This is a list, again, and I will wait till each of you get This is a listing of all the late filed resolutions and changes in the agenda that we'll need, I'll ask your permission to allow this evening, under our rules, under appropriations, late filed resolution number five dash oh eight dash twenty-four, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven eight library budget by sixteen thousand nine twenty-eight, revenues to come from donations and grant from the Tennessee State Library and Archives with Commissioner Barnwell. Is there any objection to hearing that resolution tonight? Again, all these were in the packet of material that's sent out to you, so there's no objections. We'll add that under appropriations. Under other, late filed resolution five oh eight twenty-five, resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the agricultural exposition park for an event of the Tennessee Wildlife Federation, Commissioner Hancock. Any opposition to hearing that resolution tonight? Thank you. I see none. We'll add that under other. Late filed resolution number five oh eight twenty-six, resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to enter into a contract with Tennessee, Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation for the relocation of electrical wires and equipment, Commissioner Green. Any objection? I see no objection. We'll add that under twenty-five and twenty-six, and then twenty-seven. Late filed resolution number five oh eight twenty-seven, resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to enter into sales agreement and all other documentation with the City of Franklin for the sale of real property and a permanent access easement to be used for the construction of a water reservoir, Commissioner Green. Any objection to that late filed resolution? I see none. And then, the last paragraph, please note, on the consent agenda for resolutions number five oh eight fourteen and five oh eight fifteen, the correct voting district was listed, but the highway commission district was listed in error as being Commissioner Folks', and it should be Commissioner Stan Tyson on the highway commission. So these need to be corrected. There's typographical errors were made, so...
Objection.
So is there any objection to our correcting that consent agenda so that it shows Commissioner Folks' instead of Commissioner Tyson? Any objection? I see no objection, so Madam Clerk, if you would, please make that change on five oh eight fourteen and five oh eight fifteen, and then we'll take those into, under consideration on the consent agenda. I want to issue special thanks to Williamson Medical Center for providing an excellent dinner this evening for all the commissioners that could make it. Mr. Miller called me this afternoon, left me a message that he would not be able to be here tonight, but he did give his report to you while you were there, so certainly want to thank Dennis and all the people at the medical center providing an excellent meal this evening. Overlooked any things that get it? Very good. Thank you for all those corrections, and we'll get to moving on the agenda. Under the communications and messages, at this time, I'm going to recognize County Mayor Rogers Anderson. He has some information to share with us, please. Rogers?
Mr. Chairman, we have three individual proclamations that have been drafted up by yourself, signed by you and signed by me in regards to this being designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day of May fifteenth, and if you would, say a few words, and I'll ask the individuals so desired to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proclamation, and each of you have a copy before you that we have signed, and I'm going to just pull out portions of it. I promise you, I'm not going to read all of it, but Williamson County and all law enforcement officers across the county are interested in participating in this. The proclamation says, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of all law enforcement agencies in Williamson County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all residents in Williamson County, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, the responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement officers, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of law enforcement in Williamson County unceasingly provide a vital public service, and whereas, and this, this next paragraph is what this is really all about, whereas we are honored by the Grand Lodge of the National FOP in Washington, D.C., by inviting our Williamson County Deputy Sheriff Becky Coyle to represent all law enforcement agencies in Williamson County by singing "God Makes No Mistakes" in Washington, D.C., alongside President George Bush, the keynote speaker, as part of the Peace Officers Memorial Day Ceremony on May fifteenth, that's this Thursday, noon on the west front of the United States Capitol. So Mayor Anderson and I have signed this, designating this next week as Police Officer Week in Williamson County for all law enforcement. And if the sheriff would come forward, Sheriff Dusty Rhodes, the mayor and I have signed three proclamations, one for the sheriff, one for Ms. Becky. Understand the sheriff, she left going to Washington this morning, and also the Mr. Burns, who's the president of FOP. Mayor, if you would, present those to the sheriff, and he can distribute those. Dusty, you want to say anything about, this is a great honor for everybody in Williamson County?
Well, yes, it is a great honor that y'all have bestowed this proclamation on all law enforcement in Williamson County, because I know everybody out there works diligently to keep this safe, keep this area as safe as possible. You know, I think it reflects in our crime rate because it is relatively low, and we have a very safe area in which we live. And on behalf of Deputy Coyle, I mean, this is a great honor just for the sheriff's office. She helped co-write this song, and she is just, she's got a beautiful voice. I don't know if any of y'all ever heard her sing, but she's got a beautiful voice, and will represent Williamson County real, real well Thursday. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Proclamation honoring Page High School Marching Patriots, Commissioners Tommy Little, Louis Green, Jr., Cheryl Wilson, Jason Para, Judy Hayes, Mike Lynch, Betsy Hester, and John Hancock. Commissioner Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While they're coming to the microphone, I wanted to add, this event in Washington, one of the people they will honor is State Trooper Calvin Jinks that was murdered a couple of years ago, and his family lives here in Williamson County.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Little?
Thank you. Tonight is, first, I'd like to ask, we have a few members of the Page High School marching band here tonight. If they would come forward and stand up here. It is my honor with my fellow commissioners tonight to be able to present this proclamation honoring the Page High School Marching Patriots. Now bear with me, because I've instructed I need to read all the names into our record. Whereas, Page High School Band is comprised of eighty-eight band members, including thirty freshmen, twenty-two sophomores, twenty-one juniors, and fifteen seniors. And whereas, the Marching Patriots finished Class A second place at the Band American Regional at Austin Peay State University on October sixth, two thousand and seven, followed by a second-place Class A finish in the Bands of America Superregional Competition in St. Louis on October nineteenth and twentieth, two thousand and seven. And whereas, on November third, two thousand and seven, the Marching Patriots won the state championship Division Two Governor's Cup for the fourth year in a row. And whereas, the Marching Patriots qualified in the top thirty bands of all sizes out of ninety bands consisting in sizes of over three hundred members, finished second place, Class BLA Grand Nationals, and won the second-best small band in the nation on November two thousand and seven. And whereas, the Page High School Marching Patriot members and band leaders are freshman Michael Baker, Meg Banfield, Blake Burney, Kaylee Barrett, Reagan Brand, Rachel Conrad, Rebecca Dawson, Danny Die, Haley French, Kelly Geesley, Brady Hayen, Andrew Hill, Mary Hensley, Nate Gerard, Kalin Kellogg, Mitchell Latimer, Matt Lilly, Crystal Little, Derek Mann, Kevin Minyard, Chloe O'Neil, Allison Ryan, Haley Centilli, Laura Schuman, David Sizemore, Michael Sizemore, Andrew Sorensen, Noah Taggart, Graham Westbrook, and Jana Williams. Sophomore Marshall Bolton, Ian Bracy, Dan Bryant, Ross Edwards, Zach Freeman, Nick Gordon, Brent Griffith, Liz Gilliard, Chelsea Gunn, Gretchen Heinecke, Matt Hodge, Michelle Jed, Alex Jones, Aaron Latimer, Stephanie Loveless, Carly Malden, Hunter Moore, David Perry, Rachel Ribman, Allison Roberts, LeAnn Salisbury, and Josh Underwood. Juniors Andrew Brenner, Michael Brodnax, Millie Buford, Nicole Claiborne, Stephanie Conrad, Tyler Floyd, Chelsea Head, John Lacheta, Mark Lacheta, Katie Litchfield, Patrick Lemon, Zach Johnson, Noah Coswini, Kaylee Matson, Jesse Maddox, Michael Morris, Keely Morrow, Carrie Smithson, Jessica Smithson, Adam Willeck, and Adam Wright. Seniors Emily Casey, Morgan Custard, Megan Davenport, Nicole Harb, Katie Kent, Ruth Curzrock, Chris Layman, Noah Lane, Vince Osan, Logan Schillinglaw, Wes Sparkman, Nathan Springer, Josh Stagner, Robin Wilks, and Joe Winborn. Staff Eric Harris, Director Ashley Harris, Assistant Director Scott Actley, Kenneth Calhoun, Henry Go, Lauren Gregory, Jason Palmer, Jordan Parker, Alicia Simpson, and Jack Gordon. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Williamson County Board of Commissioners reading its meeting in its regular session on this, the twelfth day of May, two thousand and eight, hereby congratulates this band and recognizes the level of excellence exemplified by these outstanding individuals known collectively as a two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight Page High School Marching Patriot Band.
Congratulations to the band and Commissioner Little, you did a wonderful job getting those into the record, so thank you very much for doing that, and thanks to those that did come tonight. Thank you for being here, and it's a great honor. Reports of county offices. Mayor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You ought to give, you ought to give Tommy Little a medal just reading all those names. Good job, Tommy. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to ask David Coleman to come up and give us a financial snapshot of the county of where we are today, and then I would like to return for a couple other remarks.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, tonight, the usual reports we bring to you, and a couple of them, of course, we didn't meet last month, so we have a couple of months in there to catch up. But on our monthly budget report, and we have February and March, March thirty-first would be the end of the third quarter, so you could kind of start getting a little better picture of how we're matching up with our budget. Things appear to be fairly normal. We anticipate on the revenue side that we'll meet or exceed all of our revenue projections, and on the expenditure side, that will be less than budget. Two things on the revenue side I might mention to you that probably will fall short, there's no doubt that they will. And we've been talking to you every month over the last six months about privileged tax and how that's been going down, and that will affect our general and real debt service funds. We appropriate those funds in July when you pass those resolutions, and if they fall short, we will have to adjust that, so you will see those two debt service fund revenues come down by the end of June. Speaking of privileged tax, you have two months' reports tonight, March and April. If you'll just look at the second column under schools, and this is the regular privileged tax, this is not the adequate schools tax, but the regular schools privileged tax. In March, you can see that we collected two... In March, you can see that we collected $283,500, which again was below last year. And then in April, the spring month, that you might expect it to go up, it actually dropped to $224,600. So, the trend on the privilege tax is staying on the low side. It doesn't appear we're going to make up very much lost ground this spring. We hope we could have a good month, May and June, but we'll just have to see when that comes about. But we will have to make those adjustments by the end of the year for the shortages on those two funds. On the Cool Springs Conference Center, in February, we had one of the largest months we've ever had. We received a check of $73,074. And in March, we had a small loss of $5,126. So, one really good month there, and they've told us that their trend for the spring is up, and they're looking for a good spring and summer. So, we hope that will continue. Those are our regular reports, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick note to let you know where we are on the 2008-2009 budget. Most of you may recall that the Budget Committee set out a guideline of 3% salary increase for '08-'09, a zero operational increase. The Budget Committee has worked very hard to hold the line on these guidelines. They did approve, two meetings ago, when we discussed growth, a 30% increase in fuel budgets in the County General Fund. We were experiencing overages in many departments, so they felt it was best to go in and address that, and that may not be enough, but that's where we're going to start, a 30% increase, which is approximately $160,000 in the County General Fund. The Highway Fund has made its own adjustments, and the Landfill has made an adjustment in their budget, I believe, for $84,000 for next-year increase in fuel costs. Of course, the goal of the Budget Committee was to have a zero property tax increase this year, no pennies increase, and we're working hard to try to meet that goal. We have two more meetings, and then a public hearing on June 10th, which you're all invited to attend, and then we'll be ready to wrap things up. And we just want to thank all the departments and elected officials that have been very cooperative and worked very hard. We had our growth meeting and capital meeting last week, and everybody was very cooperative in making the cuts that we felt were necessary.
Any questions, Mr. Coleman? I see none, thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Russell, any other comments on the budget that you want to make? His chair.
I'd say hats off to Rogers, David, for just incredible jobs that they've been doing to help us stay on track, all the department heads. We need to thank everybody involved in county government, because we're going through the, I don't know, fifth year, I believe, of zero increase in operating budgets. So, you know, it gets tough. We see some transfers every now and then, and it's like $15 here and there to move into gas or something like that. So, everybody's scrambling hard to make this work, and so we need to congratulate everybody. And also, the school system, I know, is, we're having a final meeting with them this week to lock in that, and I know that they are working very hard to do what they need to do, and so we'll all get together, and we'll bring your final product before too long. Thanks to everybody for doing what we need to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Little.
Mr. Chairman, the next individual I'd like to call up is Joey, excuse me, is Joey Davis, our trustee. He's got a very important announcement, that I think that it's always good to hear this, and then I'd like to come back.
Joey?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Mr. Chairman, board, had something happen the other day, and I went down and told Rogers about it, and he felt like it would be good to share with you. I felt like it was very unique. I've written down what I want to say, so that I don't inadvertently leave anything out. You know me, when I start shooting from the hip, it kind of gets dangerous. Recently, we had a customer who came in and applied for property tax relief. My staff gathered the appropriate proof of income. We filed that application with the state of Tennessee for the state of Tennessee Property Tax Relief Program. Many years ago, this body approved Williamson County, matching dollar-for-dollar, whatever amount that the state granted and approved. Our customer received a state check back from the state of Tennessee for part of their property taxes. They also received a check back from Williamson County Government from Mr. Coleman's office, and this was just like it should be. Everything just flowed perfect. As you know, low-income seniors that qualify for the state of Tennessee Property Tax Relief Program, in most cases, may also qualify for our program, the Williamson County Broad-based Tax Relief Program. This customer was approved for the Williamson County Broad-based Tax Relief Program based upon the information provided. They were mailed a check from the trustee's office on May 2. On Wednesday, May 7, this customer came into my office to speak with me. They handed the Williamson County Broad-based Tax Relief Program check back to me. They explained that with the government and the state of Tennessee government in the shape it was in, that they did not feel that they could accept this check. They went on to explain that they have a house that's paid for, they have a roof over their head, they have a roof and home that the government can't take away, they have sufficient food on their table to eat, so they wanted to return this check to the Williamson County Government, so that we could help others. I explained to them in great detail that the job that I feel like that our Williamson County Board of County Commissions for years has done to keep our tax rate low. I told them about the financial stability of our county, and what you all have done for that, and that they should keep the check. They explained once again that their conscience would not allow them to keep this money, when there are many other people in Williamson County that could use more help than they need. Mayor Anderson suggested I share this information with you. Williamson County is made up of great people. This is just another example, to me, of the quality of people we have living in our county. We always hear the bad deeds that everyone does, and we don't always hear the good deeds, and I wanted to share you this. I wanted you to hear something positive about the people that you, that I, Major, Mayor, and all of us are serving. Williamson County is a great place to raise your family and to live here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if you would allow me to call upon Commissioner Judy Hayes, she would like to introduce someone, and then I've got one more comment.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Judy Hayes, please.
If I may just do it from here, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to present to you tonight Mark Shore, who comes to us as a new CVB Convention Visitors Bureau Director. After an extensive search, we found this young man as the Convention Visitors Bureau Director in Charlottesville, Virginia. He has 22 years of experience, from hotelier experience to, he was working with the city CVB. He also was representing the Monticello, which of course is a world-famous home of Thomas Jefferson. So, he is with a great deal of knowledge about the historic preservation. He knows about the war history, the Civil War trails, hoteliers' problems, and he's just marvelous. He knows about investments and good investment being clean dollars from tourism. So, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mark to come up and say a few words? And I present to you Mark Shore from Charlottesville, Virginia, our new Convention Visitors Bureau Director.
Mark, welcome.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it's an honor to be before you tonight, and as I shared with the interviewing panel, I found this community 15 years ago as a tourist and fell in love with it, and continue to have that love. And everything that I have seen in this community confirms both that it's a great place to work and a great place to live. So, I'm honored to be here, and honored to be with you tonight. I just want to thank you for the vision and the leadership, that I've already seen the groundwork that's been laid, the investment that this board has made in tourism for the future, and it's obvious that you all see a bright future, and I appreciate your support and the investment that you all have made. Thank you also for the leadership you've given to the Convention and Visitors Bureau with Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Steve Smith, and Commissioner Mills. Thank you for them being part of the board, but I also open myself up to say that if you all have some insight that you'd like to share, my phone and my office is open. I'd love to hear from you as well. But thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you for the investment in tourism.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, if I might draw your attention to another gentleman we're introducing to you tonight, he has actually been on the job since about 8 o'clock this morning, and he will be taking over our Economic Development Directorship job. This is after quite an extensive search throughout the middle Tennessee area, and actually out of the state of Tennessee. The gentleman's name is Matt Largin. Matt comes from us, actually from Davidson County. I may not have any friends up at the Chamber or up in that area anymore, but Matt was most instrumental in helping us secure the Verizon Regional Office here that is under construction and later to be brought online in latter part of this year. And he was also instrumental in bringing in a few other of the businesses that you have seen come before you in the last several months. So, without a big fanfare, Matt actually lives in the Nashville area, is looking to move down here, and he has two small children. His wife is a teacher, and we are just absolutely delighted that he's here, and if I could, let you give him a warm round of applause. Matt Largin, he'd like to say a few words. Thank you.
Well, thanks so much, Rogers, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Commissioners, I really appreciate it. I'm honored to have this opportunity, to get a chance to come down here and work in this great county, and honored to represent this great community, and really am so excited about getting the chance to raise my young daughter and our one on the way here, too. That's going to be phenomenal. You know, for me, economic development is simply helping to create prosperity for those we care about. I mean, that's really, that's what it's all about. And the way I look at it, there are three focus areas to go about that. One is existing industry, taking care of those that are here, making sure they stay here, develop roots in the community, and they continue to grow here. Number two, it's business recruitment, bringing in new companies like the Nissans and the Healthways of the world to continue to grow this great economy, and making sure we bring in the right kind of companies that fit with the assets of the community. That's what's really important. And finally, entrepreneurship. That's another key area that's so important, is to help those companies that grew here, the five and 10 and 15 employees that are going to be the large employers of tomorrow, and make sure we do everything we can to support those companies throughout every stage of their growth process. You know, it's also my firm view that government doesn't create any jobs. Government creates the environment that allows the private sector to create the jobs. And that's why I'm so excited to get a chance to work with everybody in this room, because frankly, everybody in this room and everybody in this county has a role to play in economic development. And I'm excited to engage everybody in that process, both from the economic development side, all the communities in Williamson County, and really getting a chance to experience all the great things about Williamson County firsthand, when my family and I move here within the next year. So, thanks so much, and I look forward to getting to work.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You each have been given an invitation to bring to your attention, that's for the reception Wednesday night, May 14, 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock at the factory. Please make a note of that and put that in your schedule this week. Commissioner Hayes, if you would, I know that you and so many people worked, because you did a nationwide search to fill this position. Would you identify, I know Mark has talked about some of the other Commissioners, but identify the folks that you led on this committee to find Mark and recruit him here. Who were those individuals that you'd like to recognize, please?
We had the search committee, was Roy Croupp, who of course is not here now, Jay Johnson, Steve Smith, Arlene Cook, myself, Nancy Conway, Teresa Miller, Sue White. Did I leave anyone out, Arlene? Doug Hood, of course, sorry, Doug. Very key person on the instrumental search committee, but the entire CVB board was involved in the interviews and in the questions and so forth. So, it was a large endeavor, and we hope people will come to the reception, hosted by the Brentwood Cool Springs Chamber, the Greater Cool Springs Chamber, and Williamson County Franklin Chamber, and the CVB board, with food provided by the Marriott and Embassy and the factory of Franklin, on Wednesday night from 4:00 to 7:00.
Thank you. Anything else, Mayor? Williamson County Schools Director, Dr. Rebecca Sharber.
It is getting close to the end of school. In fact, the last day for children this year is next Thursday. The last day for teachers is next Friday, so it's hard to believe, but we're almost through with another school year. And our graduations will begin starting next Friday evening, and they'll go Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and we've been listing those in our FYI. So, as you get that, you can look at the end of the FYI and see the graduation times and places, and of course, we would love to have you all attend any of the graduations you'd like to attend, and if you do attend, and let us know that you're there, they'll probably want to recognize you at least for being there. But I know you have busy schedules, so I know it's not easy for you to make everything. And they also schedule their graduations on top of each other, so it's impossible for anyone to make them all, but I do my best to try to make as many of them as I can. It's a great time of the year, and I hope that we'll be really celebrating some exciting graduation rates. We've been working real hard on that. We have a really good graduation rate for the county as a whole, but as you know, we've had three schools that have been struggling a little bit, although their lowest graduation is eighty, rate is 84%, and that's really high compared to many places in Tennessee. But they're trying to get above that 90th percentile, and they've, some of them have worked really hard this year, and we're thinking they're going to do great, so we're excited about that. As I was sitting here thinking about what you might want to hear about here at the end of the school year, it dawned on me that this has been the one year that I can remember in the last 20 years when we haven't been building a school building during the school year. Now, we have been building, because we've been trying to get the maintenance building going and started, and finally, we've gotten, I think, through all the hoops that we've had to jump through to get that building going. And, you know, we opened Longview and Nolan'sville at the beginning of the year, but we are strongly in progress of building the additions to Crockett and Trinity, which you guys approved earlier this year. We have finally ended up putting the paperwork in for condemnation of a piece of property in Spring Hill for the new middle school in Spring Hill, so we should be seeing some ground moving out there very soon. We're on the final phases of the planning, the architect part of that, so we can get that building going. So, we are a little behind on that, and we may not make our opening date, which we had hoped would be next fall, but with the slowdown in the growth, we will probably be okay even with that. But we're in process with the things, we can be in process with the building. And that is my report for the evening, unless you have some questions.
Any questions of Dr. Sharber? Becky, could I, no questions from Commissioners, would you address the senior prank issue at Franklin High School, and address what, if anything, the Board of Education and your staff can do to prevent a recurrence? Had an opportunity to spend some time discussing it with Mr. Fortney, and these senior pranks seem to be prevalent countywide, just about every high school. And my question to him was, what's to keep a recurrence of this occurring at Franklin High School after all this has been cleaned up? Why do we not have somebody that can respond quicker than, I mean, we see the motion, but are you looking at that?
Yes, we are. Most everybody probably knows we did have a break-in at Franklin High School late evening or early morning, May 4th and 5th. The access was gained actually by prying open exterior door frames, and we have gone in and tried to fix that problem by putting some kind of bars that are in the doors themselves. As you are very well aware, when you went to school, or some of you went to school, they probably chained the outside door shut from the inside, which is a fire safety hazard in case someone were locked in the building, they couldn't get out. So, we no longer can do that. So, we have to rely on the technology of the doors to hopefully work, and in the case of Franklin High, it didn't work. We do have video cameras in all of our high schools, and in fact, because we have the video cameras, we have hopefully some leads on who might have done this, because we can actually go back and look at the tape and see the people doing what they did at Franklin High School. But everyone knows we have video cameras, so they always wear masks or bandanas across their faces, so they make it a lot harder on us to identify them. But we do have some leads, because we have that capability of at least viewing what has happened at the school. What we have not had at this point is someone who is watching. What we have not had at this point is someone who is watching the cameras all the time, and that is the thing that we had hoped we wouldn't have to invest in because it's going to cost money to pay someone to do that. And we were hoping we wouldn't need to invest in that because up until the latest couple of issues, we've been able to track down and investigate and find the people causing the vandalism. And while Chairman Narin talks about senior pranks at all the schools, we really don't have and haven't ever had senior pranks at all of our high schools, but we have had senior pranks at some of our high schools, and it seems to move around. So it might be at Brentwood and Franklin one year, Ravenwood and Page the next year. So most every school has had some kind of senior prank at some point, but we've been able to identify and take care of the people who have done them. We've actually had a senior prank at Ravenwood this year that people may or may not have heard about, but no damage was really done. Some people came into the school and moved a large number of library books from the library to the principal's office. So it didn't really cause any damage, just caused a lot of time putting the library books back, but certainly was not an appropriate action by anyone, and we've not been able to determine who those people are. If we had someone watching a computer monitor, and it would just have to be one someone and one computer monitor, we have security cameras that actually give off some kind of a warning to the person sitting there that there's activity in the building, and someone can call up any of the schools and check the activity. So they can determine if the activity is appropriate activity, for instance, cleaning crews in the building, or an inappropriate activity, for instance, someone at Franklin High vandalizing the property. If someone were actually seeing that as it happened, they could notify the police department. The police department could show up and take care of the issue. So we are now looking at how we might manage that, probably even on an annual basis. It's an expense that we certainly would rather put into a teaching position or something inside the classroom for the schoolchildren, but certainly the amount of money that we're having to pay to correct the vandalism, which is not going to end up being a huge amount of money in this case because most of the cleanup was done by our own people, but it just shouldn't happen. And if we could catch a few people in the act, it probably would go away altogether. So we are looking at how we could do that. I've just this evening talked to the sheriff about some possibilities and to get our brains thinking together, and we might look at, talk to Bill Jorgensen, because all we would need to do is put a computer monitor in a place, either this building or the sheriff's department, or we can hire somebody to sit in one of the schools because we have the technology to, in one place, at one computer monitor, call up every building in the district that has security cameras, and we could check over and over again, and actually, it would notify us if there was something strange. So we could handle this issue, but it's just everything that you want to handle takes some kind of money. So we're looking at some ways we can handle that. And we had actually begun that investigation before this happened at Franklin. We just hadn't come down on the best way to handle it. Is that enough information? I have like a page and a half of notes. Do you want me to read them?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions of Dr. Sharber? I see none. Thank you, Dr. Sharber.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioner or anybody else wishing to make a report? You've received the written reports in the mail that have gone out in the packets. Any commissioner of any of the committees like to make a report or comment at this time? Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to give an update on a resolution that this body passed, Resolution 10835, and that was a resolution we had filed about moving the county line in reference to people being able to vote. When we filed the resolution, as it was stated then, we got a lot of calls from people all over the state, and I want to take this opportunity to thank Senator Johnson, Jack Johnson, and Representative Charles Sargent, and especially Bobby Cook with Berger Mosley and Carson. They all worked very hard on this, and I'm happy to say that back on 5/6, it passed the Senate, and on 5/8, it passed the House, and now it's on the governor's desk for his signature. Late this afternoon, I hadn't heard whether he had signed it or not, but it passed unanimously in 92 to 2 in the House. So look forward to that. And basically, what they did, if your primary residence, although you live outside the county, but your taxes are going to that county, you are eligible to vote in that county.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Walton? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hayes, please.
I would just like to invite the people in the southeastern and rural part of Williamson County to the Bethesda Center tomorrow evening for a public hearing or a community meeting regarding the future plans of the Bethesda Library. We want to hear from all the people who would normally use the Bethesda Library in that area. So please come at seven o'clock, and we'll be waiting and getting an idea about what you want for the future. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to report? See none. Moving on, on the agenda, and by the way, each of you should be working off of the revised agenda that you got in the mail, was mailed out to you. Elections and appointments, county mayor, emergency communications district board of directors, there's a term expiring for Mr. Riley Amaker, and there is no nomination. We're still interviewing individuals for that. Expect to have a nomination at the June meeting. The Williams County Board of Health, four-year term expiring for 12, consumer representative, Cindy Howes is the term expiring, and the nomination is Cindy Howes. Commissioner Walton, the motion. Commissioner Cook, the second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Short unanimous adoption of Cindy Howes. County Commission, appointments to the Equalization Board, two-year terms expiring on 5/10. Brentwood Representative Emil Munjin, nomination is Emil Munjin. The Southwest Section is James E. Allen, nomination James E. Allen. Northwest Section, Lois B. Jeffrey, the recommendation is Harold L. Jeffrey. Southeast Section, Ennis Wallace, nomination Ennis Wallace. Franklin Representative Owen Reese, nomination Owen Reese. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Wilson, the motion. Commissioner Hancock, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Short unanimous. Hospital Board of Trustees, three-year terms expiring May of 11. At large districts nine, 10, 11, and 12, Commissioner Russell Little, nomination Commissioner Russell Little. Districts three and four, Commissioner Clyde Lynch, nomination Commissioner Clyde Lynch. Districts seven and eight, Commissioner Bert Chalfont, nomination Commissioner Bert Chalfont.
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Mills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Short unanimous. Library Board of, Mr. Commissioner Chalfont abstained. Library Board of Trustees, unexpired term expiring 6/09, resigned Carol Moth, nomination Jerry Bull.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second, was Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Short unanimous adoption, Library Board of Trustees. Notaries, you've received these appointments and nominations in the mail. Entertain a motion to accept the notaries as presented. Commissioner Cook, the motion. Commissioner Greer, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Short unanimous adoption. You have the items on the consent agenda, resolutions 14, 15, 16, 17, and then the correction that was made on changing to Tyson on each of those. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Walton and Brantman.
Barnwell, did you say?
Walton and Brantman.
Brantman and Barnwell, the motion. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Short unanimous. Moving on, unfinished business, there is none. New business, public hearing. We do have a public hearing that's been publicized for this evening, and at this point in time, we will have our public hearing. Public hearing is regarding Resolution Number 50823, Resolution to Adopt Amendments to the Storm Water Management Regulations originally adopted on November the 8th, 2004, to update and clarify the violation penalty and appeals provision and other clarifications. If you have any, if you have any desire to come and address the commission at this time in the public hearing, I'll declare the public hearing open, ask you to come to the podium, give us your name and address, we'll allow you to address the commission. Public hearing is open. Going once, twice. Public hearing is closed. We'll now entertain, well, we won't either. That resolution is on down on the agenda, other than other, so are you going to go ahead and do it now? Any objection? Let's move down to Resolution Number 23 because our counsel is here, and we may let her go home early. Move down to other. Any objection to Hearing 50823 at this point in time? I see no objection. Resolution 50823, Resolution to Adopt Amendments to Storm Water Management Regulations Originally Adopted on November the 8th, 2004, to update and clarify the violation penalty and appeals provision and other clarifications. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, motion to hear, please.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hayes, a second. Explanation.
Yes, the Storm Water Appeals Board has been working diligently since 2004 to work on enforcing the regulations and improving on those regulations. We have met many times and have made this not only an update to the regulations, but also clarification because many times different ones would come in, and it would be very confusing. So we've made that even better and also a means for them to understand the penalties and what is and is not. So I ask that you approve this, and hopefully you've had time to read it over. If there's any questions, we do have the appropriate people in our audience to answer questions.
Commissioner, what's the report from the committee? The Storm Waters Appeal Board of Committee vote?
It was five to zero.
Thank you. Any other question of any commissioner on 50823? You ready to vote? Ms. Carroll, did I throw you out of line?
No, I'm good.
Okay, good. Resolution 50823 is of consideration. If you're in favor of 50823, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Has everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Thank you very much for going ahead and taking care of that. Ms. Christie, we'll let you stay and listen or go home.
[laughing] And fly away.
Okay, now we're to the part of the agenda. Under Appropriations, Resolution Number 5-081, Resolution appropriating $663,000 in the 2007/08, general purpose school operating budget for workers' compensation, property and liability insurance, technology supplies, and attorney's fees. Commissioner Davis, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Langston, the report of the committees. Let's see, the school board report voted 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please. Commissioner Davis?
This is to shore up several areas where the budget is coming up short due to unexpectedly short, mainly due to insurance. As you know, we're self-funded for workers' compensation, and our expenses are just more than what we anticipated at the beginning of the year. There's a couple other odds and ends in here. The technology is mainly for printing supplies, the toner and ink cartridges. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to address them or we can refer to the school officials.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Davis on 081? I see none. This is on the machine, ready to vote. If you're in favor of 5081, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Does anybody vote that wish to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution 3082, Resolution amending the 2007/08 general purpose school fund operating budget, $250,000 for gasoline. Commissioner Davis?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Langston, school board report, 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee, please.
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five yes, zero no, and I'd like to offer an amendment.
All right, sir.
I'd like to add $50,000 to make the total $300,000.
Move for approval.
That's an appropriate amendment. Commissioner Mills, the second to the amendment. Commissioner, Budget Committee Director or Chairman Little has amended this to increase it by 50,000, meaning that the amount will be changed to 300,000. That's the amendment. Discussion on the amendment. I see none. If you're in favor of the amendment, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted that wishes to vote?
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no on the amendment. So we're voting on Resolution 5082 as amended. The total is $300,000. Further discussion on the motion as amended? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no for $300,000, amending the gasoline budget. Resolution 5083, Resolution appropriating and amending the 2007/08 solid waste budget by $1,918.93. Revenues to come from Keith Williamson Beautiful Sales. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cook, Municipal Solid Waste Board?
Three four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, please.
Five four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Is this is money that has been collected for the sale of items or from donations, or we've had a very successful environmental leadership class where money was collected to buy supplies for the students, and that just simply, all this has to go to the appropriate line item.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of Commissioner Hayes on 5083? I see none. If you're in favor of 5083, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. 5084, Resolution appropriating and amending the 2007/08 solid waste sanitation budget by $420,000 for additional costs and revenues relating to tornado cleanup efforts and soil removal for State Route 840. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Walton, Budget Committee report?
Five four, zero against.
Thank you. Municipal Solid Waste Board?
Three four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes, please.
I know you're aware of the diligent job that our solid waste department did during the tornado and the cleanup. Also, there was a period of time that the state was able to keep on hauling dirt from the 840 project longer than is normally allowed. All this together required more money than what was budgeted. We have requested and received $58,000 return from FEMA, but there is more money still out there that we hope will come in as a result of the labor that was done from the tornadoes. Lewis is here if you have any specific questions, but all this is directly related to tornadoes, the work that it was done at the landfill as a result of extended work from the soil that we are getting, which would be very expensive if we had to buy it from the 840 project.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of Commissioner? Any questions of Commissioner Hayes? I see none. Eight, 5084 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 5086. A resolution appropriating and amending the emergency management capital projects budget by three hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars and thirty cents for homeland security grant funds. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Walton. Law Enforcement and Public Safety Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget Committee, Commissioner Little?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith, please.
Uh, as you read under one of them, whereas this grant consists of state homeland security program, terrorism prevention program, citizen corps, metropolitan medical response system, and is grant money through homeland security. So, request your approval.
Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Anybody voted, wish to vote? Commissioner Hancock?
Commissioner Hancock?
Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 5089. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven oh eight county clerk's budget by ten thousand dollars for additional postage. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bane. Budget Committee, Commissioner Little?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
The postage went up, so that mean we have to put more money in the budget to take care of it, increase postage.
Any questions of Commissioner Lynch on this resolution? Yeah. Matter of fact, postage went up today, didn't it?
Sure did.
In favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Commissioner Hayes? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 50818. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven eight veteran services budget by one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Williams. Budget Committee report, Mr. Little?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
The sales of memorial brick pavers for, from the veterans office, uh, due by Memorial Day, and these have been ongoing and this is to appropriate it into the budget.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Little? See none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 50820. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven eight medical examiner's budget by twenty thousand five hundred and five dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Little, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Commissioner Williams, second. Commissioner Tommy Little, the motion. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Tommy Little?
Yes, we budgeted for forty-five cases, autopsies this year. We've performed forty-seven and the prospect of doing more, and this is to increase the budget to accommodate more autopsies.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Smith, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that the expenditures here for autopsies are a small part of the total, twenty thousand. In fact, nineteen thousand one hundred is for medical supplies. Uh, is there enough remaining funds in the autopsy line item to cover the expected additional cases that we're going to have? And are we just replenishing the medical supplies category that we did not budget for?
Mr. Coleman, please.
Commissioner, this is actually balancing out those funds. When they bill us, they divide those up, and the old budget did not allow for that, so we're just balancing between those two line items. They have a set charge for the autopsy and a set charge for the medical supplies.
Other questions? Commissioner Smith?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other questions on this resolution? See none. If you're in favor of 50820, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Please record a vote.
Twenty-three, yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution 50821. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven eight capital projects budget in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide funds for asbestos removal from Fleming Hall located on the old Battleground Academy property. Commissioner Little? Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, the second. Property Committee report?
Uh, six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee report? Commissioner Little?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Green, explanation?
As it's explained in there, the fate of Fleming Hall has no bearing on this, other than the fact that whatever we do, we have to remove the asbestos prior to taking any action at all on that building. So, this is appropriating the monies to do that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Little on, Commissioner Green? Um, 50821. Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I had talked to a contractor today and he, he asked me a question and I didn't know. Has there been a study done on the asbestos in the building? And, and he brought out several things such as mercury switches and things like that, which also need to be repaired and...
Yes. Al, Al Ritter's here. He can answer that because he would made...
Senior Ritter?
He, he made the assessment.
Mr. Ritter's an expert on Fleming Hall.
Well, okay. Uh, we had it surveyed by a professional firm, uh, as we do most buildings when we get into a renovation or modification. This firm has identified most of the, to the area suspect and, uh, pool samples, had those samples tested, and yes, we do have it, and the number you have is the approximate cost for removal.
Okay. Pardon? Thank you, sir. Any other questions, um, that cover you? Commissioner Walton? In favor of 50821, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution, this late file, Resolution 50824. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven eight library budget by sixteen thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Revenues to come from donations and grants from Tennessee State Library and Archives. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mills. Budget Committee report? Commissioner Little?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Library Board Directors, Commissioner Barnwell?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is just the, the housekeeping, bookkeeping aspect of money was we received from various locations. Uh, the friends of the library donated ten thousand and the state gave us fifty-five hundred or his other miscellaneous contributions. We have to account for it this way.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Barnwell on 0824? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, and zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 5085. Resolution setting the Williamson County Hotel Motel tax rate for the fiscal year two thousand eight nine. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hayes. Tax Study Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Phil Commissioners, this is our annual setting of the rate for the hotel motel tax. We had, we had discussions within our group to wonder if it now was the time to raise this, and I understand Mr. Shore, one of his first tasks will be to see where we stand and how we, going to do a little study on this to see where we need to be potentially for next year.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, I just wanted to emphasize what, uh, Mr. Barnwell said. We will be looking at that, but we already are at seventeen point two five. We don't want to kill the golden, the goose that laid the golden egg. So, we are looking at all the, the things about it, but if we do have any change, it of course will come back to this body. Uh, we have to do this every year. If we don't, it dies and we don't collect it, and we certainly don't want to do that. So, that's the purpose for it, coming back to you every year.
Thank you, ma'am. Follow-up questions from anyone? I see none. 5085 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote. Mr. Hayes, you want to vote? Commissioner Smith? Thank you. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, and zero, no. Resolution 5087. Resolution to reappoint judicial commissioners for Williamson County. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Uh, this is simply a reappointment of our sitting judicial commissioners that issue warrants and other legal documents and request your approval.
Thank you. Any questions of Commissioner Smith on 5087, which is a reappointment of existing individuals? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Unanimous adoption. Resolution 5088. Resolution to appoint Stacia Moore as judicial commissioner for Williamson County. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Langston. Law Enforcement Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, explanation, please.
Uh, this is a person who is in the department, who's going to be serving part-time. Will be no additional funds.
Any questions? See none. If you're in favor of 5088, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. 30810. Resolution declaring certain property as surplus property and authorizing the sale of the property by sealed bid. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook, the second. Property Committee?
Uh, six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is for the sale of an excess eighteen thousand gallon propane tank located at the Ag Park, which we no longer need because we've converted to natural gas.
Questions of Commissioner Green on 50810?
And it's for the contents of the tank also.
See none. 50810 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution 50811. Resolution declaring certain property as surplus property and authorizing the sale of the property by sealed bid. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hester, the second. Property Committee report?
Uh, Property Committee report, six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, please.
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Williamson County being the legal owner of, uh, certain parcels of property, uh, located on, uh, Pinewood Road, which had suffered some damage due to the hurricane tornado, and the trees that are, uh, were damaged or knocked down out there, we decided to put them up for a bid as to salvage those.
Questions of Commissioner Green on 50811? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Unanimously adopted. Resolution 50812. Resolution declaring certain property and equipment surplus property and authorizing the sale of said property. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second is Commissioner Tommy Little. Municipal Solid Waste Board?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Property Committee?
Property Committee voted, six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Twelve and thirteen are companion resolutions. The difference mainly being that this twelve is addressing equipment and compactors that are really no good anymore. They can only be used for scrap metal. So, rather than just dispose of them, we decided that we needed to sell them and get the scrap metal money to go back into our general fund.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions of Commissioner Hayes on 50812? See none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose your no button. Anybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution 50813. Resolution declaring certain property and equipment surplus property and authorizing the sale of the property and equipment at auction. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook, the second. Municipal Solid Waste Board?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Property Committee?
Mr. Chairman, the Property Committee voted, six, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Five four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
This again is large equipment. It still has some potential life, and so, we're offering it for sale at the public auction of heavy equipment, which is better than the, for the heavy equipment than the one we have here for the lighter cars and all.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions of Commissioner Hayes on five oh eight thirteen? See none. In favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution number five oh eight nineteen, resolution to approve a limited exception to Williamson County's property taxes as authorized in Tennessee Code Annotated Section sixty-seven, five, two-two-one for property owned and constructed by Habitat for Humanity of Williamson County, Tennessee. Commissioners Barnwell and Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Property Committee report?
Property Committee voted six four, zero against.
Thank you. Tax Study Committee?
Two four, one against.
Two four, one against. Budget Committee?
Four four, one against.
Four four, one against. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell and Green?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, within the Tennessee Code, we're allowed to provide a limited property tax exemption for property constructed by charitable habitual organizations for low-income single-family dwellings. This is a request to follow that state law. It's a policy that allows the Habitat property tax exemption for eighteen months while they're constructing the home, the home, excuse me. And also, after eighteen months, if these houses are not sold, the property taxes must be reimbursed to the county. From a financial standpoint, the best of my knowledge in talking with Habitat and David Coleman, this appears to be about a twenty-three hundred dollar a year tax benefit for Habitat. I think it's a worthy cause. This does require two-thirds vote by us for us to go forward, so I would appreciate everybody's approval of this, and I think it's a good cause. And we have donated money to Habitat in the past. From what Mr. Coleman told me, we gave him some money to build some homes several years back. They're not on our normal five oh C three list, but I think that this is a worthwhile cause, and it doesn't really cost that much money to help them out.
Thank you, sir. Discussion and questions, Commissioner Perre, please.
Chairman, if I may, I'd like to bother you to address a little bit of the language on the state side. I'm a little concerned about some of the language.
Mr. Chairman, the question has been asked about this eighteen-month period. On the single lots, it is true that it's an eighteen-month exemption period. When you do have multi-single-family home subdivisions, there is an extra six months for each one of those houses. What that means is that should Williamson County Habitat for Humanity obtain some property, and it's large enough to have ten residential structures, if they submitted a plan for all ten of them, the exact, the exempt period would then be six years, because it's going to be the eighteen months for the original and then six months for the nonadditional, which comes out to be about six years. It also must understand that it's not a six-year, this is what it's going to be forever. It is, that's removed when it's sold. So, if nine of those out of the ten houses are sold within the first two years, the exemption's only those two, first two years. So, glad to answer questions.
Any follow-up? Commissioner Perre?
Is there any way we can put our own limits on how long we grant the exemption? Because I know that Habitat has built some huge subdivisions in Nashville that go on for many, many, many years.
The problem with changing language in tax authorizing statutes is that the county does not have that ability. It can only exercise taxing authority and exemptions that is specifically granted, and the language in the statute does not grant the county the ability to create a lower exemption period.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Greer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, in general, oppose the county supporting charities. I think that's a choice for the individual to make, not for the county to make for the individual by using tax funds for it. So, I'll be voting against this, and I would appreciate other support.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Russell Little, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a correction. Budget Committee was five four, zero against. My bifocals looked at the wrong sheet of paper.
Okay. All right, okay. I changed the sheet. It said five oh, so Madam Clerk, if you would, change the Budget Committee report to five four, zero against, which is consistent with the sheet. Thank you, Commissioner Little. Commissioner Lynch, please.
Mr. Chairman, some of these people make a great deal of money. I know one man had got a house give to him, and he had twelve people working for him, and he got whatever he made plus a dollar a hour for each one of those twelve people over a year's time. That's right, good sum of money. They're not all poor.
Other discussion, questions, comments before we vote? Anybody else wishing to vote? Commissioner Bean, please.
Question, this is to the Habitat organization, not to an individual, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner? No. Okay. Anybody else wishing to ask a question and discuss this further? This will require sixteen votes for passage, two-thirds majority. Anything else before we vote? All in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record of vote, please.
Eighteen, yes. Five, no.
Eighteen, yes. Five, no. Resolution is adopted with the required sixteen votes. Eighteen, five. Resolution is adopted. Resolution five oh eight twenty-two, resolution of intent to fund the purchase of real property located at three oh six Beasley Drive, Franklin, Tennessee, and to authorize the Williamson County Mayor to negotiate the terms of the purchase agreement. Commissioner Green, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
He was the second? Commissioner Barnwell on the second. Property Committee report?
Property Committee voted six four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I regret to inform you that otherwise, would it been a unanimous meeting? We had one no vote last week, and it was on this resolution.
Okay.
Four, one against.
Four to one, okay. Explanation, Commissioner Green, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As we know, the present Williamson County Administrative Complex here is becoming crowded, and we have an opportunity to purchase a piece of property or to have the mayor enter into negotiation on those terms at three oh six Beasley Drive in Franklin, formerly the Williamson Precision Metals. You've been given a map that shows those locations on there. If you orientate the map so that you can read it, Beasley Drive comes in down here in the lower right-hand corner, and as you come up Beasley Drive to the roundabout there, that building right there, to the top of that, is the location of the building in question that we're looking to enter into a possible terms with the mayor and the owners. This property lends itself to a lot of opportunities. There's one, one hundred and twenty-three thousand plus square feet in the building, and then also is located on twelve point five, six acres. And as you look at, the building sits on basically seven, approximately seven acres of that, and to the left, that's a five-acre lot there that's available to us to build on if we deem necessary or take an opportunity to do that. That's basically, if anybody's having questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Thank you, sir.
Or have the mayor.
Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I felt obliged to make known my no vote on the Budget Committee. I just feel very, very strongly that we have a responsibility and a priority for a building that we already own. That building is Fleming Hall. It's on land that we own, that we purchased in two thousand and three. It's on an important corridor on Columbia Pike. We already have a large, important investment in the Williamson County Library. We have Academy Park with the gym that's been revitalized by our Parks Department, and I just feel that it's essential that we really move forward with a plan to revitalize, restore, and reuse that building for county offices. I think it's, I think it's doable, and I just feel that we are, we're putting our funding in a property that maybe doesn't have the challenges that this one does, but I think it's absolutely essential that the county and that we own up to our responsibility there, and I think it's, it will serve us well, and everything about it speaks to Franklin and Williamson County. That's not to say that this property might not be strategic. I would have liked the, I would have liked the resolution to speak more specifically about the use, because it has a very large warehouse-type building on the property, and it seems to me it has that relationships to the Justice Center and the Alternative Learning Center, and, but in the resolution itself, it talks about the overcrowding at the Williamson County Administrative Complex. So, that was my, that was my issue. I'm not really sure how I might vote now, but it really, it bothered me that we had let the other building languish, and we were moving toward another piece of property before we had really made the decision to do what needed to be done there.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Lynch, please.
Mr. Chairman, several years ago, we bought the BGA property. The purpose of buying that property was to provide office space when we had to grow for the people of Williamson County. I've got the impression for the last two or three years that this county commission doesn't have anything to say about that. We can't do anything up there. It's left up to the Heritage Foundation. Now, my question is, if we buy this, is the county commissioner and the mayor going to have control of what's built up there, or is it going to be the Heritage Foundation?
Mayor, would you like to address it? I know that Commissioner Walton asked you in one of the meetings how old that building was, and it's not historic, correct?
Mr. Lynch, several years ago, when we purchased the BGA property, there were a lot of uses, a lot of use, a lot of dreams in which we were going to address the historical piece of property laid on Columbia Avenue. About, I guess, two or three years ago, as you well remember, we have sold off all of the homes that were up there. The headmaster home has been remodeled. It's a very beautiful home, has a very, it's a very gorgeous piece of property, and the other homes up there have been addressed also. The gymnasium at the BGA property has been renovated through some funds, some grant money, as well as local dollars here to offer services to Franklin and to all of Williamson County. The other building was, through the school system, Mr. Ford has the middle college, middle college high school that's utilizing that. About a year or so ago, the school system looked at this Fleming Hall and made a determination based on some criterion parameters that they had, that they really couldn't use it for a central office. Mr. Hood is using the ball fields for soccer and lacrosse. We have taken down the bleachers. We've got a playground, a very bold color playground that sits on that facility that is serving the needs of that community up there. It is, you know, I understand what your comments were making about the heritage. They're concerned. Ms. Brockman is concerned. I do believe we'll come to some solution on that piece of property. It may not be exactly everything that everyone wants, but we've come, for the last five years, that property has turned and discussion has been made. At least a dozen different groups have wanted to address how we address that property. Now, to get specifically to your question and to address the other concerns here, this property was made available to us, or we have been looking at this piece of property for probably a good year. Many of you were here that when we purchased some highway, fifteen acres of highway property in which to build the new Highway Department, which is, we should be starting on that in the next month or so. We're actually doing the grading up there now. We purchased five additional acres, as been pointed out here by Mr. Green, that would butt up to this piece of property we're looking at here today. When you go up to the Sheriff's Department, the ALC Center, which is part of, is where the jail's at, we're out of space. Today, if you had to be, build an ALC Center, I'm being told by the, by the agency oversees that, you could not put the AL Center in with your jail, jail population. And I understand that. When I, when we look at the property here, as Ms. Brockman has said, we are, we're out of space here. I know the resolution tended to lean itself that way, because there are a lot of options that we could use this piece of property to in conjunction with that five acres. I made the comment to the Property Committee and to the Budget Committee, that's a terrible time to be borrowing money, but it is a great time to be buying. This piece of property was appraised at over five million dollars. Through negotiations, back and forth, nothing's binding until the twenty-four members here vote on it, we have come to agreeable terms with these folks at four point five million dollars for this one hundred and twenty-three thousand square foot building. Now, you talk about the usage, Ms. Brockman asked, there are many, many usages we can use this for, and I think it will solve some problems of county government and other departments, the Sheriff's Department, ALC Center, and many others, for storage that we will have for several years down the road. Yes, we're going to have to turn around and borrow some money to do some renovations next year. But the way that we've got this tied up in such a way, and I owe a lot of support from Kenny Young, who's worked with the people there, is that it will be later on this year before we actually secure money and actually go to market and have to borrow some money rather to pay for this. I envision, as we go down through here, nothing's cut in stone, that we can use this facility for several things. ALC expansion, jail expansion, some of our parking issues that we have here on the backside of this whole building where you're sitting is a lot of equipment. All surplus equipment has to come here for the most part. Vehicles, light industrial. We have one warehouse that's backside of Waves over here that we store desk, it, computers. It's just incredible how much material we have here, not even bringing into the fact of what the schools have here. We're all thrown in a situation here that I wish we didn't have to do this. It's a lot of money. But at the same time, we have a job to do and try to look out to the future and plan for something, even using this building, this building here. Ms. Brockman's concerned about it, it's, it does have metal on it, but the building right beside it has been renovated. We went over and we've looked at it. They've put some very modern material on that in which office spaces are being used. There are many usages for that building that was indeed a warehouse such as this. So, Mr. Ritter tells me that we can convert this, we can do it in a reasonable fashion, and we can solve a lot of our issues. It's not going to solve them all, but we've got to have some space here. My answer to you is, I'm not sure the Heritage Foundation will be so interested in this building as much as they have been the BGA property, but if they do, I want it to go on record, we're using it for county services and not, it's not a historical building, and I just, I haven't passed it by Mary or any of the folks, but I don't think that's a concern at this time.
Well, Mayor, I don't have any problem with buying it, and I think it's a good idea, but my problem is just take the old hospital down there, the problems we've had with it, nice sitting down there, not worth a quarter to this county and the taxpayers. And we, every time we discuss this BGA, probably hear all that crap from Heritage Foundation. I would just hear if we going to control it, and you or else the Heritage Foundation. I think it's a good idea to buy it. I don't have no problem with that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if you've got one other thing, you know, I think a great deal, Ms. Brockman, she's very brilliant, and she brings a lot of things to the commission that I think we need. I think we always need a balance. But I really don't think you want a one hundred and twenty thousand square foot building on the BGA property either. And I understand what she's saying. I think we can get there. There are a lot of options. We've talked to Ms. Stewart. She has stepped up to the plate, big time, by her remarks, and I, for one, appreciate that very much, and I think she will deliver that. I won't know until we see the checks, but she has made a commitment to help us do that and that she's very sincere about that. I think there are some things we can do on the BGA property, Clyde. We could, right now, no one wants to do it, but we could take the original building, the one that's almost a hundred years old, and finish it out, make it a nice lobby, and do some external things there. But what we're dealing with is the whole structure, and this resolution doesn't address that, but I understand Ms. Brockman asking that question, because we really don't need to be taking the backside of the old BGA building, because that's where our ball teams are playing, and, I mean, those fields are used all the time. If you all haven't been out there, from lacrosse and soccer, and there's a lot of activity going on there, and if we tear, if we build buildings up there, do something on it, then we've got to go somewhere else and buy some more fields.
Thank you. Commissioner Perre, please.
Is this building suitable for a school central office?
I would.
She just slipped in the back.
Well, I mean, any building can be retrofitted. You know, I wouldn't say no to that, Jason. It's not my intent to run the schools out or the schools to run us out. I mean, we all have to learn to live and work together. They consume a lot of space here. We consume a lot of space here, and we have made good. I think Al told me one time when we, the hospital and the county got together on this, we put this together for around, was it fifty dollars a square foot, Al?
It was around seventeen.
Oh, excuse me, seventeen dollars a foot. So, I mean, it's amazing what you can do when you do renovation, which falls me back over into Mary's lap.
Any follow-up? Commissioner Perre?
So, it could be converted, it's possible, you're saying?
It's possible. I don't know that, I haven't passed it by superintendent to see if she's interested in it at all. I wouldn't think that would be the best use for that property, Jason, to be honest, if we, because we'll be able to connect some private roads back there with our Sheriff's Department and ALC Centers and things like that.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
The, one thing that I thought was a, and you just, the very last thing that you said was kind of what I had a question toward. I think it's very important that the position of where the Highway Department is going to be built, that there will be a connector route, if I understand, and you might mention that. I think that's very important, because as we all know, Highway thirty-one is a state route road, and it is absolutely, the traffic is terrible. And if you use, my understanding, if you use that as a mean- And if you use, my understanding, if you use that as a means of getting out on downs, I think that's important, too.
Well, let me, let me be sure that we're all on the same wavelength here.
Okay.
The city of Franklin has contacted us several months back and wanted to turn that into a public road. We emphatically said no. We do not want that a public road. A private road, possibly from the jail over to, through this property on the backside, they do connect, as you can see from the map, and then eventually making its way to Downs Boulevard, but not for public use. We still blast out at the rock quarry. We still haul rock, a great deal of it, and if you allow the public to start using that road on a very frequent basis, it becomes a real liability for us, and it would be just a matter of time. Enough people would be excited to want to shut that road down, and we need to keep the rock quarry, a very active rock quarry where we are today.
Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to support this resolution, but I'm going to do it very reluctantly. It's, it is the right time to be buying property. I'm going to trust you that this is a great price. I guess it is. What my concern, though, is, is there's no plan attached to it, and we saw that, what happened with the BGA property, we're still talking about it. We've owned it for five years, and we talked about it for years before that. There's still no comprehensive plan. We've made good use of some of the property, but we're still talking about other uses of it five years later. This needs a plan, really. But because it's before us now and because of where it is, I'm going to support it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Call for the question.
Thank you.
Question being called for, Commissioner Williams called the question. Who's second to call the question? Commissioner Mills, Commissioner Barnwell, I'm sorry, called the question. You've heard the question called. All in favor, call the question. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question has been called, so Resolution 50822 is up for consideration this time. If you're in favor of 50822, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Twenty-two yes and one no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 50825, resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agricultural Exposition Park for an event of the Tennessee Wildlife Federation. Commissioner Hancock?
I for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Mills?
I'm in Cladland.
Property Committee report?
Chairman, Property Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Resolution, explanation, Commissioner Hancock, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, Tennessee Wildlife Federation is going to have a function out there, but they're also, in conjunction, that function going to have their board of directors election and a, and a private party for that group reception to, to speak, and they'll control all the doors and what have you.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Hancock? See none. 50825, be in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please.
Eighteen yes, two abstain, three no.
Eighteen yes, two abstain, and three no. Resolution is adopted with 18 votes. Okay. Late file resolution number 50826, resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to enter into a contract with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation for the relocation of electrical wires and equipment. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Tommy Little, Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Property Committee?
Property Committee voted six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Middle Tennessee Electric is in the process of running power poles across the Ag Center property out there. You've all been out there, you've noticed that? You couldn't help but notice it? And what we've come to do, Williamson County and Middle Tennessee have agreed on terms to provide a relocation of electric wires, electrical wires and equipment, should we had purchased or should obtain that property on the corner there, that they would relocate the lines out to the edge of the property so that we could make full utilization of that piece of property. This is in agreement with them to do that with the county and Middle Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask that we be as cognizant as possible about those lines, given the fact that you have these towering poles right now in the substation right across the Ag Park, which, by the way, is looking more beautiful every year because of all of the work that Kenny and his staff does. It really is a park, and the buildings that they're providing for the outdoor pavilions is really outstanding, and it bothers me that we, that we have gotten in a position where the extremely large utility lines, in my opinion, sort of mar the front of our wonderful facility. That being said, I understand the need for more electricity, and I understand that lines have to be given, and they have that right. But as we look at however we're going to do these lines, I just want us to be aware of what we can do to lessen the impact on the Ag Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? 50826, see none. In favor of 50826, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 50827, late file resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to enter into a sales agreement and all other documentation with the city of Franklin for the sale of real property and a permanent access easement to be used for the construction of a water reservoir. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Langston, Property Committee report?
Property Committee voted six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, Commissioner Little?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, the city of Franklin desires to purchase real property for, and a permanent access easement to allow them to put a third additional water tank up on the property behind the Ag Park. This would allow them to have access to it and the property to direct, direct the water reservoir. And this is not going to disturb the balance of the county's use of the remaining property.
Thank you. Questions of Commissioner, Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Same goes for this resolution as well. The way the road is constructed, how it affects the viewshed from the Ag Park is something that we need to be cognizant of, and I hope we can do that.
Commissioner Lynch, please. Mr. Wallace to come up and explain, tell me that it's not going to affect that Ag Park.
Commissioner Lynch, there's already two water tanks up there from what the city of Franklin wants to do, and there is an access road that, back there. For me, I do not see it would affect our operation in any way because it's my understanding, Anderson may want to help me, there's already a road going in there, and they can use that existing road.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Other questions? See none. Resolution 50827, if you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Commissioner Hester? There we go. Court of vote, please?
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. And then finally, late file resolution 50828, resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Cook? Did this go before any committees? No. Report, then Commissioner Hayes on what this is, please.
This had to be filed late, commissioners, because we just learned late this afternoon that the Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation is offering some additional grant money, more than what we anticipated last year, for the disposal of our waste tires that we take at the landfill. The, our response has to be pretty immediate before our next commission meeting, and we certainly don't want to miss out on any opportunity to get grant money for the disposal of waste tires. This simply gives permission for our legal staff, as well as our county mayor, to enter into the agreement to secure those grant funds for our solid waste department to take the solid, take the tires that we need to dispose of. Hopefully, it will be even more money than we got last year.
Questions of Commissioner Hayes? See none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Court of vote, please?
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Anything further from anyone tonight? Commissioner Brockman, please.
Well, I just wanted to thank the, the group that put on the wonderful seminar, was it Tuesday? Commissioner Hester and I were there, economic development, quality development, and how Williamson County was, as mentioned a number of times, of the, the different decisions that we've made in a responsible manner in terms of land use, et cetera, that other counties are looking at. And it's a wonderful book that Cumberland Region Tomorrow gave us, and I'm providing a copy to the county, Mayor Anderson's office. It really is outstanding on all the different infrastructure decisions, and well worth my time, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hester, please.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to announce that there are several upcoming tours that benefit our community. I would like to mention one in the 2nd District in West Haven that will benefit Waves Incorporated. It is a garden tour this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and thank you very much.
Anything further? Again, thank you for being here tonight, and I'll entertain a motion. Would you earn? All in favor, stand up and depart.